Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda.
Hello.
How are you?
Doing well.
Yeah. Rob, make sure Bill identifies himself. So that we don't get Zoom bombed again. Do you have a way of communicating with him? All right, people, it's 7 o'clock. Come to order, please. I'd like to remind all of our guests, if you haven't signed in already, there is a sign-in sheet right on the table by the door. So if you haven't signed in, please do so. We would appreciate it. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is Wednesday, the 23rd of February, 2022. And we are at the GPW Conference Room and also on the Zoom platform. We'll start with roll call attendance, starting from my left. Dan Kylie. I'm David Frack. Eric Russell. Phil Merritt. And on Zoom, we have Linda.
Linda Jones.
And?
Emily Stewart.
Kate, can you speak up a little?
Yeah, then I'm gonna have a problem tonight, I think. Kate Plumley Stewart.
Okay.
Audio is really bad. So you guys are really quiet and Linda is really loud. So there's something going on.
Is there any way you can, Rob? Okay. There is one addition to the agenda that I am aware of, and that will be discussion of correspondence from a member of the public. And does anybody else have any additions or subtractions they wish to add to the agenda? Okay. Public comment. Oh, Kurt, I'm sorry.
Are you referring to the Paul Mercy?
Yes, that's correspondence. Anyone have any comments? Dr. Thies.
Yes.
And this would be a comment that is something that is not to be taken up tonight. And go ahead, please.
The question is, what extent do you want to take up the information that was sent to be by Mr. Mercy?
We're gonna have a discussion of it.
Is it going to appear in the planning board meeting?
It's part of this meeting. I just added it to the agenda.
So Mr. Baker will report what he said?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
All right.
And that would be the appropriate time for you to voice your comments.
So I'm gonna sit here until this is done. That's fine. But I have something that I want to read into what he sent.
Well, I will give you that opportunity.
All right.
Okay. But we have an agenda. We have several people from the Heritage Commission who are going to present to us. And since the correspondence from Mr. Mercy was only received yesterday, that had to be added today. All right. First order of business is the select board.
I also wish to speak to that subject.
Well, fine. When we get to that subject, I will recognize anyone and everyone from the audience. They will all, you will all get an opportunity to voice your opinion, read anything into the record that's not already in it. I should note that the letter from Mr. Mercy is part of the record of the planning board at this point. And let's leave that discussion for after our presentation. As I was saying, we do have several members here from the Heritage Commission. And we'll get to them after we do minutes and the select board report. So Kate, can you tell us what's going on from the select board, please?
Yep. So but first, can you, we can't hear, I can't hear the audience at all. I don't know if Linda can. I've got you on max volume. And so the people who are talking in the audience, they, yeah, and Linda, I'm probably really loud, Linda, right? Yeah, so there's something wrong with the audio because Linda and I can hear each other, it's really loud.
Rob, can you turn those mics and turn it around towards the audience, maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
Using the meeting owl as we do every meeting. There's nothing different.
All right.
Setting, the only thing I can do is turn off.
All right. The rule for tonight will be when you speak, you'll come and sit in one of these two chairs.
Or you could repeat a little bit what they say depending, but that would be helpful.
Okay. So let's go with your report, please, Kate.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm kind of off track because I couldn't really hear. So, select board mats on, oh, boy, here we go. Hang on, let me. On the 15th, it was a very brief meeting and learned a little bit about broadband committee and participation of our new town manager on that. Please, wasn't a whole lot on the agenda. Think of the thing to know right now is they have gotten a new quote on the Oak Hill Bridge replacement. And so we'll be meeting briefly tomorrow to discuss that. That was noticed today. Sorry, Linda.
Okay. Is that it, Kate?
Yeah, I mean, unless anyone has questions, they're really, we're gonna be doing policy review. So if you guys pay attention to the agendas as they come out and you have any questions on policies, obviously, we'll try to refer policies through committees that affect them as an advisory and to get input. But the next two policy, we approved the fraud policy and investment policy that were already on the books. We just reaffirmed them. And we got a notice of ARPA funds. So we potentially are getting $950,000 towards our wastewater. That's the sewer project. Don't have it in hand yet, but that's pretty exciting news. And I'd like to give a shout out to our team for making that potentially happen.
Okay. Okay. We want to know that Ceeley O'Piero has joined the meeting as a guest. And the next order of business is the minutes from January 12. If there's anyone who needs some time to read them over, please do so. Everyone ready for discussion on the minutes? Comments, questions? Changes? I make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Motion made to approve the minutes as written by Dan Kylie. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, Linda?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Linda. All in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Linda, you're opposed?
She raised.
Okay. And extensions?
One extension.
Phil abstains. Okay. Minutes are approved as submitted by the clerk. Thank you. With me? Let's see. Next item is a presentation by the Enfield Heritage Committee on the proposed Enfield Center Local Historic Triangle.
No, the Enfield Center Historic Triangle.
Okay. I'm sorry, I had the name wrong. So Meredith, you're gonna present on behalf of your group?
Right. Well, I'd like to proceed before I go forward with all I have to say. The Heritage Commission has been studying this for about two years with the ultimate goal of Enfield becoming a certified local government. Why a certified local government? Because simply it will allow us to apply for funding that we wouldn't otherwise be eligible for. Lebanon is a certified local government town, as is Bristol, Hebron, Jeffrey. You can go on the internet and get the list of, although it may not be up to date, which towns are certified local governments. It's administered through the Division of Historic Resources. So that's been a goal for a long time. We looked at, to back up, two years ago, I drove around town with Nadine Miller, who was in charge of the Certified Local Government Program through Historic Resources in Concord. And she first settled on mill houses. She said, this is a gem to have mill houses intact. And then, as you go down Shakerhill Road, the mill owner's house, the mill manager's houses, terminating with the Greeley House, which was where the Shakers housed their mill manager. And the more we thought about it, the more we thought, this is really more than we'd want to take on. It would require contacting every property owner and getting written permission. And so we then focused on the three buildings in Enfield Center to create your triangle. The Union Church, the Enfield Center Townhouse, and the Enfield Center Schoolhouse. Two of those buildings are on the National Historic Register already. And the third, the schoolhouse, is eligible for the National Register. And so we came up with the title Enfield Center Historic Triangle because if you look at the map, the three are together. They don't require written permission from property owners like the mill houses and down Shakerhill Road would, much less work for the Heritage Commission. And yet, they're not on the tax rolls, so that wouldn't be affected, wouldn't be affected anyhow. But it's just one less hiccup to overcome. It would allow us to create this local historic district that's required to become a certified local government town. So we have a three-step process. Local historic districts require design guidelines. And we've been round and round and round with these. Some are, you've heard of the Nantucket syndrome, very restrictive. We can't paint your house a color that we don't approve of. That's not what we have in mind. These three buildings are all white, they'll probably stay white. But there's nothing in the guidelines that we have drafted that would require them to stay white. We, I don't even want to get into discussing the design guidelines tonight. I'd like you all to look at them and make comments and give me feedback, what you would have found acceptable and what you wouldn't find acceptable. It's not our idea to create these. It's just part of the rules for that ultimate goal of becoming a certified local government. What is a local historic district? Well, it's very different than a national registered district, which has no restrictions whatsoever. A national registered district is honorary, really, unless you take the 20% federal tax incentives. The Hewitt House was a building that they took advantage of those tax credits. A local historic district is an area in which the majority of residents have decided they want to keep the look and feel of the place they call home by adopting a local preservation ordinance and then creating a local preservation commission to administer it. In this case, you already have a local historic district commission because that's the Heritage Commission. It's technically the Heritage and Historic District Commission. This local legislation is the best way to protect historic character, this historic character of the buildings, streets, gates, and neighborhoods from inappropriate alterations and incompatible new construction, as well as outright demolition. A local historic district does not freeze in an area in time. Local historic districts are about guiding change and preserving community character as an area grows and evolves over time. The big advantage, as I see it, is historic tourism for Enfield. People come to towns like Enfield, especially an area like Enfield Center, to see this 19th century architecture. The Enfield Center, excuse me, the Enfield Shaker Village Historic District, where we are still awaiting approval from the state. It comes under the DOT, but we have this scenic byway in place, but we applied two years ago for a major extension, which would go all the way to the Grafton Town Line. And that would include this historic triangle, of course. We're waiting for the DOT to reappoint the board that makes the decision to approve or disapprove the extension. So the advantage of this, as I see it, is economic. It's preserving community character. And it's a win-win situation. How do I become a certified local government? It's the program designed to provide an opportunity for local governments to become more directly involved in identifying, evaluating, protecting, and promoting, and enhancing the educational economic value of local properties of historical, architectural, and archaeological significance. I've already told you how you become a CLG. Linda, by the way, has been our point person for this. So Linda, chime in if I make a mistake. I've made what I call a simplified cheat sheet for you because it can be overwhelming. If you go to the internet, it's about 40 pages of stuff, most of which you don't need to know. But the key thing is the financial benefits of a certified local government. The matching grants available to municipalities that have become CLGs can be used to fund preservation activities such as surveys, national register, preservation planning, and educational projects. So that's the character going on there. That's a lot of words to explain why we would like to establish this Enfield Center Historic Triangle. So questions?
Questions for members?
I think the most significant thing is that the amount of the grants is, that is available to the town of Enfield is much larger if you're a certified local government. This is a screening process for the people giving away money to help decide who's worthy and worth the effort to spend the larger amounts on. And we'd like to be one of those towns that can. When you think of what Franklin has done, it's just amazing when you say, where did they get those millions of dollars? Well, they became a certified local government. And they were then eligible to apply for larger grants. And some of our old buildings could use an influx of money to stabilize them, to improve them, to insulate them. So it's money-driven.
Anyone else have questions? Kurt?
On the, I misunderstood, I didn't quite catch. The difference between the historic government, you have to become an historic government before you can have the historic districts?
No. No. You have to establish a local historic district in order to apply for the certified local government program. We're proposing one historic district, local historic district. The three buildings I mentioned, the Union Church, the Townhouse, and the Schoolhouse.
I have a question that is, the district itself, I mean, those parcels are not connected.
That's right. But it's still, we're allowed to do that. Linda, do you want to address that? The parcels that are not connected, such as the Londonderry Study?
Right. We went over this last year with the state and asked how people, you know, what they were doing around the state. And for example, Londonderry doesn't have a line drawn around each, like the Shaker Historic District. They simply have numbered each historic building, and there's a master map. So it, there are several forms being used. And I specifically asked if they had to be contiguous, and that would include being across the road. But there are other properties in between. And should they be included but called non-conforming? And they said, no, you don't need to do that. So the simplest thing is to simply name the three properties. Did that answer the question?
Yeah.
And I think, Kurt, one other thing is that they require design guidelines that are different than your local regular zoning. And to say, oh, well, Enfield's downtown is a historic district, but it would require regulations for that that wouldn't be satisfactory to everyone. So when you take three public properties where everybody's goals are the same, is to maintain them, to raise money to fix them, they aren't going to.
We lost your audio. We can't hear you, Linda.
The frustration's absorbed.
All right.
Just one question. If we become a CLG, that just, that doesn't affect just these three buildings? Would you be able to get grants?
Bingo. I forgot to mention that. Thank you, Dan.
You need to have a district there in order to get the CLG. But the CLG is not just for the district.
That's right. It's for the entire.
Okay. So you could add other historic districts down the road?
You don't need to. They all, you become.
But yes, you could.
Right. But you become grant-eligible throughout the entire town.
Exactly.
Okay. In terms of, Linda? Kate, okay. Kate, I recognize you.
Thank you. So within the triangle, any properties that are inside, in between those, they are not subject to those regulations?
Correct.
Okay. And are, do we have in writing from the parties who own the other two properties that they are on board with us?
Well, we have representatives from those two properties here tonight, John Carr and Paul Layler, and Tom Bull, representing the Union Church.
Okay. I think we should get it in, you know, a written agreement before we sign them up for something, not just.
Well, I'll agree for John and Harry for that.
Apparently, that's possible. Historical Society Directors support this program. Three offices. Three offices. We certainly support the program. And obviously, we would review all of the requirements before we released it. But I see nothing from what we've seen or heard tonight that would cause us to be concerned.
And did you have any? No, that was it. Okay, I have a few. First, in terms of the grant money, you mentioned that it's matching grants?
Yes.
And is it a straight 50/50 match?
I would imagine, I haven't gone that far to look into it, other than it's matching. And it. And, uh, it, let's say, well, there's one hundred and fifty thousand in the warrant for Whitney Hall. That could be matched right there, without even going to ECHI. If we were CGL, CLG, I was getting twisted.
And do you know what kind of restrictions, if any, are attached to these grants? Are, are they federal or state money, or?
It's federal money that's funneled through the states. And I would imagine there would be some restrictions, i.e. you can't put a neon sign in front of perfectly reasonable restrictions.
Okay.
I mean, the, the ultimate is, if, if the restrictions get to the point where you find them unacceptable, then you decline the grant. We've been through this with the Land and Water Conservation Grant, and we went round and round. Jack Wasby, this inter-town manager, was really, really hurt because of all the string. And one by one, they were worked out.
Okay, um, next question. Your cheat sheet, on the second paragraph, it states that the Historic, Historic District or Heritage Commission serves as an advisory board to the municipal government and to the land use boards, planning, zoning.
Well, yeah, that's under the RSA's, the govern- uh, land use boards, at which the Heritage Commission is one.
Well, in, in one of your other documents, and perhaps, perhaps I read it incorrectly, but in one of the other documents, it left me with the impression that the Heritage Commission or the Historic District Commission, essentially would be making the decisions.
No, they would act as an advisory board to the town, to the select board, and to the, uh, planning board. This, this, uh, the Heritage Commission is supposed to work hand-in-glove with planning.
Yes. Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree that, you know, this is the way it should be, but there was something else I can't locate right now, which led me to believe that the whole thing was flipped, so I'm, I'm glad that you clarified that.
Oh, and I would add that to establish a local historic district, one of the requirements is that the Heritage Commission work closely with and have the full support of the planning board. So it's not like the Heritage Commission is going to slip something under the tent.
What, what exactly is the role of the planning board in applying for and essentially signing off on the concept of a CLG?
Well, I think it's getting money for the town, that's our goal.
No, what, what is our role, not goal? In other, in other words, do we have to pass a resolution?
I would imagine so, I haven't looked into that. Uh, we, we're just presenting this for the first time with the planning board.
Okay.
So I would have to talk to the people at Division of Historic Resources, which is what the program is run through. And it's confusing to me because a certified local government doesn't sound like it's funneled through the, the DHR. But I think it's because the funds that come from the Fed are funneled through that agency.
Okay, so, uh, I think you've got a little bit of a roadmap in terms of what we would like to know as planning board.
Okay, well, perhaps you could email me your questions that we.
Oh, sure.
Address. And work out a solution.
Yep.
Or more information. I mean, this, this tonight is simply a, an introduction to what we hope to do. Our goal would be to have the Enfield Center Historic Triangle on next year's 2023 warrant. Uh, town one, because it would have to be voted on by the town.
So how is that going to impact the proposed Whitney Hall and Public Services?
Well, it's not going to impact it at all.
So, we, so we couldn't use any money from this program for?
Well, we could if, if we have this program in place. But the wheels of progress turn slowly.
I think I can help answer that one. Please. The way the building projects work is you have to put the bond vote at the ca- at the maximum amount. And if we get grants later, you don't have to borrow all the money, but we still have to put the total.
Thank you, Eric, yes.
Yeah, so, so if we were able to get grant money, fantastic.
Sure, it's like a pot of gold, just float it in.
I, I, I guess, I guess my question is the other side of that point, which is, uh, to rephrase it, will the town be eligible for a grant for a project that's already underway or possibly even completed?
Well, we have an example of that with the Land and Water Conservation Grant. The park, Lakeside Park, was already well underway when we applied for that grant.
Okay, that's great. Um, any other board members have any questions?
I mean, I, I don't want to misrepresent the, uh, uh, concept of grant application. I've been doing nothing but, and it's a lot of work. But it's very worthwhile when you get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars handed to you.
Oh, of course, and, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of, uh, you know, applying for grant money to offset town expenses, particularly when you've got some rather large prospective expenses for, uh, for renovating Whitney Hall. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of the town going down this route. Yeah, I will definitely compile a list of questions and send you an email.
Okay, and we hope to be working together with you on this.
Absolutely.
Get some bucks.
Yes.
And the other thing that Erica did not mention was the fact that in addition to the financial opportunities here, it recognizes the three buildings in Enfield Center, which are historic that. And that brings something to Enfield Center that hasn't occurred before.
I'd like to point out on the Schoolhouse, it's believed to be the last remaining two-story schoolhouse in the state of New Hampshire. And John went to school there. First grade.
I was hoping you wouldn't mention that.
Well, it was, it was nursery school, actually.
Okay, um, anything else? Yes, Mr. Trumbull.
Yes, Harry Trumbull, uh, here tonight as trustee of the Union Church. And I think one of the things that we need to realize is, uh, old buildings require maintenance. And, um, they, they're a valuable part of our community. My grandson has been spending time with us in California and toured the, uh, museum and the Town House and the church. And he's often remarked on the fact that the architecture in New Hampshire is so different from California, where everything's relatively new. And I think we have a lot of potential to bring some energy and activity into Enfield Center. Kind of be, develop that, uh, mentioned tourism. And people do, I see people taking pictures of the covered bridges, uh, in Lebanon and so forth. People do come and go to these things, they're already coming to the shit of the museum, so this ties in with that. And I think from the church's perspective, uh, the possibility of getting a grant to help with, uh, renovation and so forth would be, it's well worth doing, and, uh, I don't see a downside to it. Anyway, I just wanted to express our support.
Thank you.
Great, move forward, they can explain.
I just learned, uh, I would like to also recognize Andrew Pushing, who has been invaluable in helping us along the way. And, uh, I just learned recently and asked Andrew about this, that the Union Church was called the Town House originally. And then there was, in eighteen nineteen, there was something called the Toleration Act, which said that, uh, churches and public meetings couldn't happen in the same place. Well, the church is what, eighteen thirty?
Eighteen thirty-six.
So I thought, well, that doesn't make sense. Why would they say no more church services and town services? Well, Andrew tells me that that was slow to come in rural towns. Uh, they were racing to catch up in the eighteen forties and even eighteen fifties to abide by this law, the Toleration Act, that came in in eighteen nineteen. So I thought it was interesting that the Union Church was originally called the Town House. And then they moved the Enfield Center Town House to its present location. And it became the Town House, and the church could become a church.
That's an interesting set of history.
Yeah, well, I just was given by Jean Patton, her father's, uh, notes on this building for Enfield Center. And Town Hall was held, the town meeting for two, three years was held on the second floor of Proctor's store, wasn't called Proctor's at the time. Anyhow, the deeper I delve, the more interesting it gets.
Very good, all right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming in and for, uh, a very excellent and informative presentation.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you very much. We still have plenty of work to do.
Well, whatever you need from us, come back and we will do whatever's necessary.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Heritage Commission meets tomorrow night, so.
Okay, so, um, let's just give these folks a half a minute to, uh, exit, which they have. Let's see, update on the Master Plan Task Force, me. The Master Plan Task Force has not met for about a month. Our next meeting is Monday, the twenty-eighth. We will be reviewing final, uh, not final draft, but we will be reviewing draft of the housing at that time. And our consultant, um, promises complete first draft for all the chapters, all five chapters that we're doing the day after we meet. So we'll be, uh, moving right along on that. Our main discussion items for, uh, Monday's meeting, sort of a step back, where are we? How do we proceed from here? How are we going to organize, uh, some focus groups to get feedback on the drafts? Who's going to be the facilitator or facilitators of those focus groups? How we pick the people who participate? And, uh, just a lot of, uh, nitty-gritty logistical stuff. So, nothing, you know, nothing at this point to, uh, really report to the planning board. But, uh, we're definitely moving along, and I think during March, you're going to see a complete first draft. And, uh, you know, I think we'll probably take some time at one of our March meetings to take a look at it and discuss it, and give any feedback, uh, back to the task force. So that's, that's kind of where we are on that. Next item is going to be correspondence. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we had received a letter from Mr. Paul Merzke regarding our warrant articles, specifically the article that proposes the deletion of the alternative village or the village zoning alternative. That letter is dated the eighteenth of February, or whatever reason. It did not reach me until yesterday, so that's why this is all pretty much last minute. We have two members of the public who have indicated they would like to make comments. And I'm going to ask them right now, would you like to make your comments before the board discusses or after the board discusses?
I think we should go, man.
Yeah, well, I'd like, you can go now, I want to wait until I hear what you have to say.
All right, sir, would you please come forward and sit in one of the blue chairs so that people on Zoom can hear you, and tell us who you are, please, for the record?
Ah, yes, uh, Tim Jennings, um, live on, uh, May Street in Enfield, been here, I think about thirty-five years now. Know the town pretty well. Yeah, I, um, I'd spent the last four or five days, uh, since I got the copy of the town report. Can, can you all hear me in the, okay? Trying to sort out in my head what Article Four was, was about, and why, why it was being proposed. All I have to go on is the narrative that you provided in the town report, which I'm not gonna, not gonna read, but the, the first reason it's cited is that the village alternative, the village plan alternative has never, has never been used. And I'm aware of Mr. Merzke's correspondence, and he raises that same point. So it might be a question to you, has the cluster development provision ever been used? And perhaps it has, I don't know. So that is a question I hope you will address tonight. But if it hasn't ever been used, then that makes that first reason seem rather dubious. The second reason cited, the village object option is redundant to the cluster option. Now, that one was especially baffling to me because it is a complicated arrangement of the, basically, the three methods by which you can build a development town. And Rob, I hope you'll interject if I say something incorrect, I'd like to know right away. But, uh, Jerry and I went over this, and I think we got this pretty much right. But what I did to try to get this straight in my head is I took a Cetigraph paper and I laid out a hundred acre parcel. And I made the assumption in my little example that about half of that, fifty acres, is probably unbuildable. Typical New England or, uh, Enfield parcel due to wetlands. There's a pond or two, there's steep slopes, there's poor soils, et cetera. Maybe a lot of, uh, the land in the back is just not access- accessible, so say fifty acres. So, as I understand the zoning ordinance, what that means in theory, in a five-acre zone, is that I could split that into ten, five-acre parcels and build ten houses. Of course, we all know that you really can't do that, the way the lots have to lay out the geometry of the land, and that, you know, that never works out that way. Plus, to develop the land, you're probably going to need some access roads, and you have to allow for the right-of-ways, et cetera. So it's really not ten houses, it's probably six to eight, let's say. And you end up with a, uh, housing development that I think most folks don't really like, unless you, unless you like a, a, a large home and not concerned about eating up a lot of land for, for the housing development. I may have misspoke about that, but let's, let's move on. So then I looked at the cluster development. And what I understand about that is that, uh, since the, I have to, I have to set aside fifty percent of the buildable acreage on the lot in order to put my development. So the fifty acres, I have to eliminate twenty-five, even though it's buildable, I can't, can't build on the twenty-five. But in consolation, we're going to get to reduce the lot size to two and a half acres.
Can, can I, can I make a correction to what you just said?
Please do, please do.
I believe the ordinance says you have to set aside fifty percent of the either of the net buildable area, not of the total area.
I agree with you. That's what I just said.
It says right here, section four oh five, which is to maintain fifty percent or more of the gross, groves, not net, gross buildable land.
Buildable being the key.
Right. So in my hundred acre parcel, only fifty acres is buildable. So out of that buildable portion, I have to set aside half. Twenty-five acres. So for the twenty-five acres on which I can put my development, I'm allowed to reduce the lot size to two and a half acres. Again, if you try to just, how many two and a half acre lots can you get in twenty-five acres? Well, you, you're not going to get the max number. My graph paper, no matter how hard I tried, I could never get more than about ten or twelve houses. I also still end up with fairly distance between houses. Starts to look much like the Pan Development, for instance, might be an example of that. So, okay, I understand both the first two options. Let's look at the village plan. Now, that option, if we understand this correctly, we take the hundred acre parcel or the buildable parcel, rather, and we can only use twenty percent of that. So I've got fifty acres, I can only use twenty acres to, to build on. So right off the bat, I, I conserve more land than the cluster option. Uh, but in consolation, I get to reduce the lot sizes to whatever basically the market was there. And there's words that describe that in more detail, but that's essentially what it amounts to. I happen to live in May Street in Enfield. I've got a one-third acre lot. I can probably throw a basketball and hit my neighbor on both sides. We really like that environment. A lot of people do. There's not a single house in town that's not occupied or owned. I don't know of any that's sit or sit vacant because people think they're too crowded. It's just something that folks love. So a creative visionary developer could actually create a village, which is the intention of this, this portion of the zoning ordinance. To build a, a, a twenty houses on twenty acres of land in a grouping that would maximize the efficiency of his resources that he's putting into roads, electricity. Any other sort of amenities for that, for that lot. That was the reason for the village plan in the first place. Now, without getting into the whys and wherefores and what do we really want to see in town, back to the original point of my being here tonight, is when you say that those two, the cluster option and the village option are redundant, that is just not the case. They result in two wildly different results. So how could you possibly have that as a reason in your narrative? The last reason you cite. The planning board has determined that the cluster development provisions provide more flexibility to the town. That's the last reason you cite. My question to you is how so? And why is providing more flexibility to the town a good thing? It would seem that the goal should be to provide more flexibility to the property the developer and ultimately to the homeowner and taxpayer. I see the village option as provided the greatest flexibility to those who in the future make the invested, investment to build more housing in our town. While at the same time preventing the cookie cutter, large tract developments that we've become accustomed to, will also best preserve the natural environment and allow new housing that's similar to what rural New Hampshire villages have looked like for centuries. Lastly, I, I wonder why take this village option away now before our new master plan is done? Are you not aware, I'm sure you are, sir, of the how, recent housing stu- studies done by the Upper Valley Planning Commission? We have no interest in affordable housing to build in our town. We may need this village option to help us fill homes for the next generation because clearly five acre zoning and cluster developments are not doing the task. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. I appreciate your thoughts. Board members?
I got a page here or two.
Do you want?
Someone else wants to go first?
I believe we did have an approved cluster, did we not? Iron Man was a cluster development. It just didn't get built in your neighborhood. The original Iron Man project was a cluster. It wasn't on five acre, it was not in an R five. But it was a cluster development.
And there was one on the Methodist Hill. I think it was Rock Ridge it's called, but I might be wrong on the name of the developments. Was a, done as a cluster.
Yeah, that's right.
Space cluster development.
Up on Birch.
Yeah, but what about the one by Shaker Village? Those houses are like ten feet apart.
That was prior to zoning.
I mean, that, that would have fallen under.
That would be a cluster development.
Yeah, yeah, but that predated the actual ordinance.
No, no, because it was prior to zoning.
No, no, sorry. If you wanted to build Shaker Village today, you could not. The village.
You couldn't use the village. You couldn't use the village. Because it wouldn't have had enough conservable. Well, it might have.
It depends how many houses you build.
So many houses you built, but that size wouldn't have fit unless you had, what, two hundred acres?
And then the other two clusters, all two sided when those were proposed, which option wasn't available.
Rock Ridge might have.
Rock Ridge was, yeah. The one up on Methodist Hill was, because that's not that old.
Did those actually ever get built? Did those actually ever get built?
Yeah, Rock Ridge got built. It was.
Right. Yeah, up on Methodist Hill, the back side of Wellback.
Um, one of the things that I don't like about the village plan is that it allows you to use all the space that let me start a different way. When you're building the regular, regular houses, you have zoning rules and regulations to follow. So that it's pleasing and orderly. With the cluster, there are also rules. But the village plan has a different way of looking at it where there is no large area set aside and open space. You get to count all the space. You get to count the space between your property line and your driveway. You then get to go the other side of the driveway and count your lawn as open space. It, it's like someone wants to not follow the rules so they can use that plan. And it doesn't seem like the right thing to do. Can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely.
My screen stopped. But that makes me very uncomfortable with the village plan because there, you, you've lost the two methods of accountability we had.
Linda, we lost, I think you might have said one or two things after losing the methods of accountability.
Not sure.
All right. If, if it comes back to you, we'll, we'll get back to you again. Let's, uh, let's see, Kurt, you have some response, uh, response?
Yeah, I do, actually. I went through Mr. Merzke's letter and did a point by point rebuttal. I'll just highlight this section that I'm referring to. And then I'll just leave my comments to the like, make life simpler for her. First off, I just went through right from the top. Village plan is not redundant in its capacity and preserves a monolithic and unbroken contribution computer to open space and wildlife habitat. Uh, my response is there is no requirement in the village plan alternative for the open space plan to be continuous. And there is no requirement preventing any of the non-developable land from being counted towards open space area. His next comment is provides flexibility and we're removing a flexibility from the town and public body and it restricts the board's capacity for intelligent decision making. This is not removing a planning board option. It's preventing a developer from creating a housing development that would not meet the spirit of a cluster developments. It's, it's nothing to do with removing flexibility for the town. It's, it's a developer's flexibility. If anything, it's being removed. The village plan has never been used, the cluster development has also never been used. And the reasons why neither plan of this, because the housing growth or population growth in Enfield within twenty years has passed, has been reduced or not growing. Open space development was the rec, Rock, Rock Ridge and Methodist Hill Road was an open space cluster developments. And our is, it's, um, open space development is not a population control or ordinance. It's a housing ordinance. So the population can remain the same, but people move out, people move in, houses still get developed or land gets developed. And there's been numerous developments in town since both have been on the books. And neither one of them is, or most of them have not been even, even considered by the developer for open space or village plan. So that's just a developer's choice. It's, uh, I, we mentioned there was no public meetings, uh, open forums to discuss this, this, uh, forum article. It had all the same opportunities of every other one article on the ballot. It was discussed at all those meetings. And either it was mentioned or discussed at all the various meetings, same as all the other long articles. So it's up to the public to follow if they're interested. And it goes, there's a long paragraph regarding the amount of open space and how weird those houses would be constructed. His narrative has, in the way it was sold to the town at the time it was adopted, was that all of the houses in the village plan alternative would be clustered in one little corner of the lots. And that's his description about how using the flag, uh, the American flag as a visual. But problem with this, there is no legal requirement in the, um, village plan alternative to cluster the houses anywhere. It just, um, also required for open space to be continued and there was no requirement for the open space to be continuous in any way, shape or size. There is no requirement preventing any of the non-developable land from being counted towards open space area such as the wetlands, steep slopes, flood zones, et cetera. There was no requirement that the open space area even be accessible to the owners who live there. And all of those requirements are written, written on the boards on the open space cluster development ordinance. And none of it is in the village plan alternative. It's only states that twenty percent of the, or less of the entire parcel, parcel available for development shall be built upon. So that's essentially the whole lots. Anywhere on that lot, you just add up your twenty percent and on paper and you get your, your developments. Doesn't have to be usual. It goes into this American flag, it's And it's, my final point is that because nothing, none of those requirements are in the village plan, plan alternative, it's not enforceable to, if someone comes in with a plan that shows the houses scattered all over the lot, but they only cover twenty percent of the built, twenty percent of the lot in square footage. And if it's not in the ordinance, you can't enforce it. You can't say, that's not what we want. And the courts are not going to require a developer to build something a certain way just because someone else envisions development being built that way. So us or anybody else can not go to the developer and say, no, we're going to deny it because that's not what we envision. If it's, basically if it's not in writing, it's not enforceable. That was, been always my, my biggest fault with the village plan alternative is that there was not enough written restrictions on how that twenty percent could be developed. Just left out too much, too much of stuff. Basically, you read through the open space ordinance. It's all spelled out. This is where the houses have to go. This is what cannot go used towards open space. And so basically.
Before I get into my comments, is there anyone else on the board that has comments on these letters? Anybody on Zoom? Kate or Lynda? Comments? So?
Um, I do. Sorry, I took, took a second. Yep. Uh, you know, and I think there, in that letter, there are some big feelings, right? When people write and draft something, especially on a state level and then get their town to adopt it. But to acknowledge the, the body of work that went into it, but this, I think it's very important to also say this isn't personal, right? This was based entirely on facts. It was nowhere raised that anybody moved, as was insinuated in the letter. It was simply based on the fact that we want to have better guidance. And like Linda explained, we know, we're not comfortable allowing people to count their front yard, their side yard and have these disjointed properties. And we do want to protect, you know, the animals moving through the environment and have a little more control. So I think all of, I, I understand the concerns and it probably didn't feel good. But I think that this was done with good intention and not ignoring any of the other processes or desires to keep our town rural and preserve open space and natural habitats.
All right. Thanks, Kate. Um, I guess it's my turn to go into it. I did read through the correspondence, as did Kurt, and I did prepare a draft response. Which, Rob, can you put that up on the screen? It's not going to do the whole thing, is it? Where it says a hundred and forty-four. Okay, so, um, you know, first I address, I address some of the factual errors as, as did Mr. Godheart. The board did not summarily vote to. The board did not summarily vote to remove this regulation. All zoning regs have to be voted on at town meeting. This is only a proposed deletion. Again, as Kurt pointed out, there has been, there is an established process for public involvement. We have followed that process to the letter. And, you know, if, if we can't get people to be interested and come to our meetings. You know, short of a direct mailing, which is expensive. We've complied with the letter and the spirit of the, of the. Public involvement process. The proposed elimination of the village alternative does not represent a change in public land use policy. It represents a refinement and clarification of how that policy is implemented. I think it's very important to note that the policy and the implementation are two different things. And what we're talking about here is clarifying the implementation of a policy. And as most of the planning board members are aware, and those of us who are on the master plan task force are definitely aware. There's an overwhelming desire on the part of all stakeholders to retain the rural undeveloped character of Enfield. While allowing for controlled growth. That apparently has been a policy of the town for many, many, many years, if not decades. And it will be strongly emphasized in the master plan when it comes out. So no change there. Rob, can you scroll down a bit? If you're more. That's it. A couple of other things that I picked up on from reading the ordinances, the two, the two regs. Under the cluster development reg. The undeveloped land is common land. It's owned by a community association or homeowners association. And that is a deeded. Yeah, like, like any homeowners association, it goes with the deed. You buy the house, you buy a percentage of the common land. And that land has to be made available to the residents of that subdivision of the cluster development subdivision. Under the village alternative. And I, I'm reading this directly from the ordinance. The. Well, I'll paraphrase for just a second, but the, the developer. The developer shall grant, I'm quoting now, shall grant to the municipality within which the property is located. As a condition of approval, a recorded easement reserving the remaining land of the entire original lot. Solely for agriculture, forestry and conservation or public recreation. The reported easement shall limit any new construction to structures associated with farming, forest management and conservation uses. And shall specify the restrictions contained in the easement are enforceable by the municipality. You know, that's kind of a nice thought, but when you get down to the practicality of it. I don't see where the town through this easement. Wants to get into agriculture or forestry. Or a number of the different options that are listed in the, in the ordinance. Somebody has to pay for that land. And. Clearly, it would be the developer who passes that cost on to the homeowners. And to have, to have to pay for that land. Even though it's common land, but it's, it's included in the price of your lot and your house. To have to pay for that and then to have an easement that says that the town can come in and conduct public, public recreational activities doesn't seem quite fair to me. So that's, that's another big. Shall I say negative to the concept of the village alternative? And another thing that I want to point out regarding the cluster development, if I can scroll to it. This is section B1. And it says, any pro, proposed development of 10 or more dwelling units as opposed to building lots. Shall conform to the standards and regulations for cluster development. An exception may be granted by the ZBA to allow for conventional lot sizes. So it, it appears to me, and this, this ordinance was drafted and incorporated well before my time on this board. And probably even before I came to Enfield. It appears to me that if a developer is contemplating 10 or more units. He has to do the cluster development scheme. No ifs, ands or buts unless the zoning board lets him out of there. So in terms of gaining, i- i- in terms of furthering the goal of keeping as much contiguous open land as possible for wildlife. For recreation, for conservation, or whatever. By requiring a cluster development scheme. I, I think that just furthers the goal, the town's goals. Yeah, and, and the public policy of the town has decided it wants to pursue. That's kind of all I have to say on the subject. Dr. Thies, would you like to? Would you come up so that the microphone can pick you up, please?
Ms. Baker, can you? Okay, I think that. The thing that is most concerning me as a citizen here. I'm not speaking as a member of the conservation commission, so don't make the error of that. Is the land use. And now it says specifically in 405.1. That if a developer can demonstrate that the intent of section 405, which is to maintain 50% or more of the gross buildable land as permanent open space. And preserve special places is not violated. What you're saying in 405.1 is that only 50% of buildable space has to be left open.
I believe it says 50% or more.
That's right. Now, what builder is going to agree to leave more than 50% of the property has open? So it's never going to be any, any more than 50%. On the other hand. Village plan specifically says that no more than 20% of the buildable land of the entire. No more than 20% or less of the entire parcel available for development can be used. So what you're dealing with here is a 30% difference in the amount of land that can be covered by homes. And that difference involves potentially increasing the habitat for wildlife. Because it amounts to 80% of the total property in the village alternate plan. As opposed to only 50% of the property in the cluster plan. So I don't think under those circumstances, it's a, it's an accurate statement to say that the two plans or that the village plan is redundant. It's not redundant. It is just specifically a little more restrictive in what land can be used to put houses on. Now that can be gotten around. I know there are people here who are feeling as though the housing shortage is acute in Enfield. If you build vertically instead of horizontally, you can accomplish both elements. You can keep from using up the land that might otherwise be available for recreation, agriculture, forestry, wildlife. And still provide the homes that people are looking for. Many of them are looking for. Downsizing. So the last point I want to make is that. He wanted, he points out, and I think that this is certainly something that should be kept in mind. With respect to improving the board's flexibility with regard to decision making. The decision making capacity of any public body is never well served by removing available alternative decision making tools. And the options for the consideration and use by the public body. Removal of options constricts a board's capacity for intelligent decision making. I think that's an important point to remember that if you tie your hands to one development scheme. You may well be cutting off the opportunity for an additional development. Now Kurt mentioned. Something about. The density. And it is mentioned here once, once again in the village plan alternative. That the density. In the village plan. In no case shall a political subdivision impose lesser density requirements upon a village plan alternative subdivision. Than the density requirement imposed upon a conventional subdivision. And the idea that you have to build in a village plan, your houses in a, in a constricted square is not right. Murzky points out that you could build a village plan on the design of Canaan Street. And still have the same kind of. Open land left behind. So you don't need to fill up a square. You can still use the village plan alternative. And basically, for me, that's the critical factor is keeping sufficient open space. That you retain what is the essence of Enfield. This place right now, as far as I'm concerned, is a failed community. It started out as an industrial based or an industrial entity based on agriculture. Making a wool of garments based on the sheep business. When that collapsed some 70 years ago. There really wasn't any significant effort made to rebuild this town. In the way that some people here are thinking of it. Recreation, tourist attractions, hiking. To utilize what the community, what the geography offers. Not what humans can change the geography to provide. That's really all I have to say. Murzky has said he's going to do everything he can to try and defeat the. Article four and. I guess we'll see how it comes out in March.
Okay, does anyone have any comments regarding what Dr. Thies has just put before us? Kurt?
Well, you and the village plan implies that the 80% of the non, non-developed land will be. Available for wildlife and other.
Agriculture.
No requirements saying that that opens 80% of open undeveloped land will be unfragmented. And that's the.
No, that's not true.
We're just saying it's going to be, will not be unfragmented.
Says that no more development can take place on the preserved land after the 20% has been.
Well, they, when you have the plant in front of you and the developer adds up his numbers of acreage. And he comes up with this 80% of the square footage as being non-built on. It doesn't say where those, where on that plant, how he ended up those numbers or any of it being continuous. And then fragmented.
That to me would be important for the planning board to determine whether he was adding it up incorrectly.
No, no, the numbers just have to add up to 80%. How we get to that 80% is up to the developer.
Well, if you had 100 acres that was buildable. And you say here in this. Alternative village plan that's. The entire parcel within which the property is located. Can be built on 20% or less of that parcel. Available to develop.
The whole parcel is available for development.
And they build on 20% of it, right?
Right, but there's still no restrictions on the, on buildable part of that parcel.
I also think what Kurt is saying, Dr. Thies.
I understand what he's saying.
No, no, is, just hold on for a second.
All right.
The only thing that counts the 20% is the foundation footprint.
Right.
Anything else is considered a part of the 80%, including your front yard.
That's not what this says at all. It says 20% or less of the entire parcel.
Exactly, the entire parcel is, you can, you, your building footprint is what you could, is what you're building on. Not your, but your front lawn would be considered open space under this.
No setback requirement.
Cause there's no setback requirement for anything.
I think you guys are.
I'd like to speak, I've had my hand up for a while.
I haven't stopped speaking yet.
No, you're gonna wait your turn because you've been speaking back and forth. So.
I recognize, Kate.
Thank you. So my concern here is I hear in the back and forth everybody's concerns. But we don't get to make up the rules as we roll, right? We don't get to insert our opinions or force our neighbors or the developer to do one thing or another. We have to follow the rules as they are written. And as they are written, there is a footprint that is not open space. Everything else is so the little deer can wander into the front yard, the side yard, around the pool, whatever. But that counts as open space and we don't get to make those determinations as a planning board. And if we do start legislating that kind of stuff, it's going to get overturned in a higher body and we are going to lose. So I think I see a significant amount of risk in going down that rabbit hole. I don't like to expose our town to risk and to potential lawsuits. And I don't like us to see, to say, oh, well, we have good intentions and we think it means this. The only thing that counts at the end of the day is what is actually on the paper in writing. And what is in writing allows for non-contiguous spaces.
Thanks, Kate. And if I may summarize. It's, it's a matter of specificity, the way the ordinances are written. And the village plan. Alternative contains far fewer specifics than does the cluster development ordinance. And I've been on land use boards for probably at least 20 years. And the more specific the ordinance is, the better the outcome. Because it's there, it's in writing. And the less you have subject to interpretation, the cleaner the whole thing is. The town doesn't wind up in a court fight. And, you know, I just, I just see the, the goals of the two. Ordinances are the same, which is maintaining open space. You've got some differences in the percentages. You've got some differences in the percentages, granted. But, you know, the go- the goals are the same and I, I honestly think that the cluster development ordinance is better written, easier to interpret and definitely meets the town's policy of keeping as much open land as possible.
What is your definition of parcel, Dan?
Of what?
A parcel is the 100 acres.
A parcel was, a parcel was 100 acres before it's subdivided.
Yeah.
So it says the 20% or less of the entire parcel, parcel available for development. It says here that the entire density permitted by the existing land use regulations of the political subdivision within which the property is located on 20% or less of the entire parcel available for development. So to me, that's saying that only 20% of that 100 acres could be developed. Do you agree with that?
Yep, yep.
Now where that 20% is, is variable.
Yep.
And that provides the developer, well as the property owners and so on, the option. But the point is that whether or not you develop 50% of the property or whether you develop 20% of the property, you've still got 30% more of the space available for wildlife.
Let me finish. Go ahead, I'm not talking.
The wildlife of the efficient game department indicates that it takes at least 100 meters. That's 300 feet for a wild animal to feel comfortable walking between homes. So if a person can arrange to have that kind of space between houses, which will be an improvement in fire protection as definitely indicated on Wells Street. Fire department kept that fire from spreading to those other homes, the two homes adjacent to it because of the distance between those homes. Now, in the alternate village plan, there is an exceptional amount of fire retardant materials that are required to be used in those homes, which may add to the cost of the homes and may result in, in a developer not deciding to use that plan. But at the same time, the alternative is there. And as Mr. Merzky mentions, alternatives may be more useful than restricting yourselves. You guys got your own ideas and I respect them. I've said mine and I'm doing.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jennings, you had a comment. I saw your hand was raised.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make a, a general comment. So I, I've learned a lot tonight. I think maybe some points raised that perhaps there are some technical issues with the village plan. I still maintain the narrative you put in the town report is, is, is not.
I, I will, I will agree. Probably the word redundant shouldn't have been.
I, I take responsibility for that. I wrote it.
Well, no, see.
And I, I think it could have been expressed better. I was trying to keep the narratives short and sweet so that people would not have to spend a whole lot of time reading them. And perhaps it was, not perhaps, it was a bad choice of words.
So lesson learned. Fair enough. Enough said. The, the other side of this is that there is an interest in people's parks to have housing developments, new housing developments in town that are not spread out all over the world. And, and my, my main attraction to the village plan was the idea that one could create, recreate, although smaller, say a shaker village on a 100 acre parcel somewhere else in town. You cannot do it with the current cluster arrangements. You just can't. The, the setbacks, the distances are just, just too great. So whatever we do in the future, I hope we figure out a way to enable that to happen. Maybe that's just massaging the village plan a little bit to take care of some of those points you raised, Kirk. But I think that can be done. I hope you will give that some thought. Thank you. Appreciate all your good.
All right, thanks, Tim. We appreciate your coming in. Okay. So the original intent or my original intent of putting this on the agenda was to develop or see if the board wanted to develop a response to Mr. Merzky. And I had drafted that and there was a final paragraph, which in essence invited him to attend on our next meeting and participate in a discussion of the merits of each of the two plans. Is that something that the boards would wish to do? Okay?
I guess I have a little bit of a concern that we aren't focusing solely on residents, right? I want to make sure at this point that we are looking, because there is information coming in from the master plan. And while we're hearing some things tonight, I would rather have this be a resident oriented discussion. And I think it's very important to listen to the folks who are gonna live here and live with this and be, you know, impacted by potential development in their neighborhood or lack thereof. You know, maybe on their taxes or in other ways. So I guess I don't see a lot of value in engaging in a significant back and forth over a political point that really is on a state level. If there's nuances and things, we can't do any of that work here. It's a question of, yes, you want to have this on the books or no, you don't. And maybe it comes off and someday the village plan gets modified, but there's not a lot of traction in other towns. If you do some research, you know, it's just, I, I don't think you're gonna see it get modified on a state legislator level. And I don't think that this is the appropriate venue to have that kind of deeper discussion on the fundamental flaws that are the reasons why we're considering taking it off. You know, in terms of having an Enfield discussion, absolutely, but I don't see a lot of value in going back and forth.
I think your point is taken. Kirk?
Yeah, if I was your question to the board, I mean, Mr. Merzky could have zoomed in for this meeting. If he were to have a discussion on this, he could have been at the public hearing when all the moment articles were discussed. And as Kate pointed out, I, I, I believe when the town adopted the village plan alternative, we adopted the state RSA. We did not adopt the wording. We adopted the RSA. So it's either all or nothing for us on the books. And I also tried to find other towns that I did a brief search, went to state websites, state, state planning office website, and they have a list of towns that have different things. And I think four towns came up with Enfield, but that had said village plan. Two of the towns, I couldn't find it in the ordinance currently, so it might have been an old list. And one town by, yeah, by spy, let's say where the it was.
Word search.
Yeah, yeah, it was blocked for what a reason. That town website had issues. And my antivirus thing wouldn't let me through. So, but there was only like five towns and two, and two of them, I couldn't even find it in the books. So and then, yeah, there's, Mr. Merzky wants to zoom in on some planning board meeting and do a public comment on it. That's his choice. But I don't see continuous discussion over this. It's going on the ballot, warrants.
So.
People decide.
Right.
Let the people decide. Let the people decide. We couldn't have a discussion with them before the vote anyways.
That's true.
Because this is gonna be on the ballot. It's not gonna be a town meeting.
Right, it's a moot point. And like Kate's point, I think, yeah, I think maybe next year we have to, hopefully we get more further with the past the plan. And we, we review the cluster development ordinance that's, that is also on the books and do some massage it.
I'm all for increasing density.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and just work, work some of those numbers.
Yeah.
And I also think, you know, with energy prices going up like they are and the numbers I'm seeing as far as energy being depleted rather rapidly in the next 10 years, we're gonna have to look at growing our food closer to home. We're gonna have to look at producing energy closer to home. That's just something we're gonna have to look at next, in the next five to 10 years. Cause the numbers I'm seeing are not looking good. Easy, the low hanging fruit and the fuel business are gone. We're gonna be spending a whole lot of our paychecks keeping our houses farming. Unless we start coming up with some alternatives and getting some buildings constructed to be better, more energy efficient. Garage apartment I built two years ago and I, I'm doing my second winter. I haven't turned the heat on in the garage. It's not, it's not on below 40 degrees. That's kind of compact. It's like a, it's like a furnace. It's like a ice chest. Got 17 inch walls. Cost a little bit more money upfront.
Save it for longer.
But you're gonna save them a long run. And those are the things you have to look at because fossil fuel is not gonna be around in a plentiful supply that we've grown up to use. Gotta start looking at that.
So back to my question, how shall we respond to Mr. Merzky's letter? Should we respond at all?
The letter was pressed at the book planning board meeting. Just heard that.
Yep.
Same as any other public comments.
Okay, I will, no, thank him for his letter and tell him it was discussed in the meeting. And we hit it back?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got the direction of the board of this. Thank you. Kate? Your hand?
My hand was up. No, I was just gonna say as a general practice for the town, I think across every board and committee and for all of us who are public servants, I think it is a good idea to acknowledge. So I try to write back to each email and acknowledge that I've heard. And so I think that that motion is doing this, but I, I also think it's a good practice across all of our committees because we owe everybody a listening ear who's among our constituency.
I agree. All right. I think we've beaten that horse to death. Rob, do you have anything for us? No?
I'll make a motion, Peter. Second, or is that too late?
You got it, Dan. And I, I think I heard Phil seconded.
Yeah.
All in favor of a journey? Hi, pose. You're opposed?
You're opposed, let that. Frozen, frozen in you.
Okay. We are at 8:39. Thank you, everybody.
You, um.
Thanks for coming, Jim.
Bye.